Okay, the call is on me, it's four o'clock. A present?
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Iza Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez is on his way.
All right.
What was the excuse, have some member?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, you're excused.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we pray that we will have a productive meeting today. We pray that we will be able to discuss and tackle the important things we need to tackle and be efficient in handling those things. We also pray that you give us the grace to come up with the best possible and morally right solutions that would best benefit the people we serve. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, we have item two A, proclamation proclaiming November 6th to 2023 as Romeo Robles' Day.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, Commissioner, Dr. Flores.
Bring the family forward on either side, that way they're behind you. Bring them forward. Pass it in front of them, pass it in front of the cias. Come here, just like that. And los laos si quieren, you're fine there, because you're in the back.
Kimberly Mendozada, Director of Development Services.
Yes.
Thank you for proclaiming November the 6th Romeo Robles' Day. Mr. Robles was born in Farr and is married to Ms. Rosa Robles and has four children. Mr. Robles has dedicated many years to public service, from serving our country during the Berlin crisis, being an educator with PSJA ISD for 27 years and serving the city of Farr in the capacity of Planning and Zoning Commissioner. He was appointed by the City Commission on October 21st, 1999, to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we recognize the many contributions to public service, his involvement in the planning process, serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission for 24 years, and improving the quality of life for our residents. Mr. Robles is joined by his family, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and planning staff.
Wonderful. You want to introduce the wife? Is she here? Daughter. So where's, is there a wife or no?
Yeah. She's not present.
Okay, good. How about everybody else? Because I don't know the family.
We have the family.
The daughter?
Mary Lou.
Got it. Got it. Good, and behind you. Welcome. And of course, during the service, it's Joe Serra, right? I know you. Her, her, yes. What about these two gentlemen? Lord.
Mr. Charlie Ramírez, planning and zoning.
Okay, great. All right.
So I get the honor of reading the proclamation. And it's really, it's very special to me because he's my uncle.
Okay, all right, good.
Whereas Romeo Robles was born on August 27th, 1939, in Farr, Texas, to J.M. Robles and Maria Luisa Ibañez Robles. And whereas Romeo Robles is married to Rosa Robles for the past 66 years and have four children, Mary Lou Depen Schmidt, Romeo Robles Junior, Joan Philpot, Roel Robles. And whereas Romeo Robles graduated from Farr San Juan Alamo School, High School, in 1958, he attended Pan American College and was called to serve our country in the United States National Guard from 1961 to 1962 during the Berlin crisis. While returning back onto American soil, he finished his education at Pan American College in 1963 with a bachelor's degree in education. He later received a master's degree in education from Pan American University. And whereas Romeo Robles became an educator in 1964 at the Farr San Juan Alamo Independent School District, working with special needs children for 27 years. As we know, teachers don't just teach. They prepare us for the road ahead, saying, "You appreciate the effort," reminds teachers that their impact goes beyond the classroom. And I want to stop here for a bit. I remember going to church, and I remember my tio sitting there with kiddos next to him from school. Actually, the children that he worked with had challenges, behavior challenges, those kiddos that were tough to work with, and they flocked to him. And on weekends, he would make the effort to meet with them, he would make the effort to bring them to church and care for them and love for them. Not everybody does that. And he did it with all of his heart, and at that time, it was like, okay, he's not only an educator by trade, but by heart and by life. He lives by it. So that was really impressive, like, to me as an educator, I don't think I ever went to that extent, and he always did it. Whereas Romeo Robles was appointed by the City Commission on October 21st, 1999, as a member of City Farr Planning and Zoning Commission, and continues to serve as an active member on this commission. Now therefore, I, Iza Flores, on behalf of Mayor of the City of Farr, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim November 6th, 1920, 2023 as Romeo Robles' Day.
Nice. Mr. Robles. How are you, sir?
Good, fine.
Good. Pleasure to meet you. Wanted to say, on behalf of myself, personally, thank you for your service, first of all. Thank you for everything you do for our country, and second of all, thank you for doing what you do for this great community and City of Farr, plus PSJA. You've been, you've got a long record of educating all the youth in the PSJA, but also the fact that you've touched so many people on the personal side, which by, you know, all metrics, you have no business doing, but you did, because you cared. And it's very rare to find people with those kind of attributes, and we're so lucky to have you in our community, and we thank you for doing that. Thank you for sharing your, your heart, thank you for sharing your, and showing people that you care, and that you can make a difference, one person can make a difference. And those children that you touch, I assure you, they transform in a positive way because of what you decided to do. And so, thank you, sir, we appreciate that, on my behalf, okay? I don't know if the commission, now, I, I know, Danny, you're pastor, right, I mean? Right?
No, I was, I was recommended at one point in my life, very close to God, yes.
See. So he can attest to the fact that, I mean, he's also been involved in helping youth in that, in that regard. So I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything to Mr. Robles before he signs this.
I just want to say thank you very much, I've known the Robles family for, I don't even want to say the year, because then I'll, they're gonna get mad at me later. But, Mr. Robles, thank you very much, I know my father was a friend of yours, and I want to thank you for the service that you, first for the country, and then also for the community that you have always been involved, from way back. I mean, with my dad, with the baseball programs in the late 60s, early 70s, so yes, definitely. Thank you very much for your commitment to the City of Farr.
I'm gonna just add to that, as the mayor said, the groomer said, I'm not a pastor, just to clarify that, but I am, I am close to God, and I do see what you have done and everything I heard today, I thank you for that, because not many people will do that, especially when, when you're an educator and your pay is different. Sometimes people use to be good, or to show that they're good, just to get more money, and I have heard here, sir, you have done nothing like that. You've done everything with your heart, and I thank you for that.
Now, Mr. Robles, if you wish, you, you can approach the mic and say whatever words you'd like to say to your community, because they're watching, so it's up to you if you'd like to share some words.
Well, I'm completely surprised.
Good, that was a goal.
And I thank everybody for your, your good wishes. Right now, I'm battling cancer, which I have been absent from, from the board for a little while, but.
Yes.
I plan to come back.
Thank you.
I thank God for being with me during my illness, and I'm declaring myself healed, so expect to see me around.
Good.
And I'm, I'm surprised too. I wasn't expecting anything like this.
La familia.
So, thank you very much, you did surprise me. Thank you.
We're honored, sir, we're honored. You want to help and come up here, so we'd like to take a photo of the family with, and...
No, me, I didn't want to get up, now I gotta hide back here.
Look at me.
Not as big as you are, boy, you fucking...
All right, next item, item two B, proclamation proclaiming November 11th, 2023, as honor our Veterans' Day. We have Lucio Gaetan with the American Legion.
Mr. Gaetan's here? There he is. You want to come to the podium and bring your colleagues?
Can we all come up?
Of course. Okay, all right, welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so, whereas it has been long been our custom to celebrate November 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle, and by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas, in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in other great military conflicts, which have added millions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas, to protect the, the nation that they love, our veterans step forward when America needed them most. In conflicts around the world, their sacrifice and resolve helped destroy the enemies of freedom and save millions from oppression. In answering history's call with honor, decency and resolve, our veterans have chosen, have shown the power of liberty and earned the respect and admiration of a grateful nation. And whereas, all of American veterans have placed our nation's security before their own lives, creating a debt that we can never fully repay. Our veterans represent the best of America, and they deserve the best America can give them. And whereas, to expand the significance of honoring our veterans, the United States Congress approved on June 1st, 1954, the changing of the name, Amistad's Day to Veterans' Day, a legal holiday to be celebrated with appropriate gratitude to the men and women who served and have served in the United States military. And whereas, on this patriotic occasion, let us all commit ourselves to the great need of fostering a spirit of rededication to the ideals that have served as a foundation of this great country. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of City of Farr, Texas, by virtue of authority vested in me, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, and indeed the residents of Farr, I assure you, we do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2023, as honor our Veterans' Day. And when it's whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Farr to be affixed on this sixth day of November, 2023. Thank you, thank you for your services.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Gaetan, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, anybody want to say a few words before, before guys? Marines? Oh? Okay, I just got to share a little something with you guys. Today's proclamation serves as a testament to your commitment and dedication to honoring the brave men and women who served our grateful nation. Commissioners, Mayor, thank you, honored guest. We, the veterans of Farr, are truly privileged to reside in the community that values and respects the sacrifices made by its servicemen and women. Your continuous efforts to create a supportive environment for veterans and their families have not gone unnoticed. Thank you so much.
And a reminder, you guys owe me a lunch, because I was taking guys for lunch for Veterans' Day, so.
Yes, sir. We do.
I owe you a lunch, that is. You want to bring your comrades up here?
Sure.
Take a photo with you guys?
Gentlemen, ladies.
You're veterans?
All the veterans, not just those guys, it's the City of Farr veterans.
Jonathan?
All of them.
Jonathan.
You in the Marine Corps, if I have got one of the red? All of them, it's the City of Farr.
No, I could, right in front of them.
You're left, right?
Anybody for public testimony?
Yes, sir, we have Connylin Gus.
Who?
Connylin, Connylin Gus.
Gus? Is that the last name, Gus?
G U S S.
Mr. Gus? Mr. Gus?
Not here.
All right. Anybody for public hearing?
Yes. Francisca Martinez?
Martinez? Francisca, or Francisco?
Francisca.
Francisca. Martinez?
Not here.
Okay, all right.
Item five A, City Engineers' Report. It's in your packets, if you guys have any questions, Ruben Onfatos here.
Events of interest?
Next, we have Yudi with our, some video recaps for us.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioner, Mayor, Yuri Gonzalez, Office of City Communications, Director, for the record. We had a successful parade this Saturday, it was the Salute to Veterans Annual Parade, it was a great turnout, we had many people joining us, of course, celebrating and honoring all of our great veterans that we have in our community. The full parade recap is actually on our social media platforms, this is just a shorter glimpse to those who missed it.
Wonderful.
Of course, the event ended with a great fireworks display show on South Farr, so that was great, we also had the market days, and people really enjoyed it. This was Saturday. Now, Sunday, we had the Arbor Day, we'll play this short video, and if you have any questions, we have Seth Hill with Parks and Reg that spearheaded this event, for more information.
Okay.
Today at Dr. Long Park, we are planting a handful of native trees that will provide some shade for years to come. Planting trees like this not only help us manage the hot summers that we have, but they also really, really help provide comfortable walkways for anyone who visits the park, as well as some habitat for some of our wildlife.
So all these trees out here are donated by the Apache Tree Grant, you know, we're very proud of our, keep our beautiful organization, we continue to work hard to provide green spaces and beautiful areas for our community to come out and enjoy.
And that concludes the videos for City Managers' Report.
Yes. Congratulations, great, great job.
All right, next is item six, consent agenda.
Just real quick, if I may.
Yes.
First of all, I mean, I know Veterans' Day is on the 11th, but to me personally, thank you very much, veterans, for being here, thank you for your service, and we are the home, and I guess a lot of people don't know, Mr. Gaetan just called me Brother Gaetan, I mean, we've known each other forever, that Farr is the home for three different, we have the American Legion, we have a BFW post, and we also have the RGV Marine Corps Legion. So, I mean, to me personally, that's very proud, you know, I'm a fellow veteran, and so it means a lot to me that you guys are very active in this community, and it means a lot to me, and I just want to thank you all personally, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right.
All right, item six, consent agenda, all items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body, and will be enacted by one motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I want to exclude H1 and 2, so we can bring it back, because I got abstained on those two items.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. You want to take a session?
Yep.
Yes. All righty, in accordance with section...
No, 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 we're gonna...
Oh, we're gonna go through it? Sure. No problem, next time.
I'd like the motion to bring back H1 and 2 again.
All right, sir. All right, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
An abstain.
It passes, thank you, one abstention, all right? Anything else, Commissioner? All right. In accordance with section 551.071 to 551.087, the Texas Department of Code, the Farr Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convenient to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time line being 4:27. Okay, we're back, it's 5:34. Regular agenda, 7A, Orders and Resolutions, 7A, consideration in action of any ordinance extending the boundaries of the present corporate limits of the City of Farr, Texas, and annexing new, all right, territory into the City of Farr, containing, consisting of a 0.104 acre tract of the land out of Lot 1, Block 1, re-subdivision of Clausner Subdivision, located on South Veterans Road and Doffing Road, a 1.71 acre tract of land, more or less, located on the right of way of South Veterans Road and Doffing Road, and a 241.56 acre tract of land out of Portion 71, located on the south side of Doffing Road, in the City of Farr's extraterritorial jurisdiction, that is ETJ, in Nodaw County, Texas. This is a first read, and it supports Development Services.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you. 7B, consideration in action, any on resolution submitting entitlement votes for candidates, or candidate, to the Appraisal District Board of Directors, 2024 through 2025. That one supports sound government.
That one, we have 135 votes, we recommend them be applied to Arbor Cardenas.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. 7C, consideration in action of any on resolution allowing participation with SAVVIK, buying group for corporate cooperative purchases and/or services. This item supports service excellence.
Full move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right. 8A, administrative, discussion with the Board of Commissioners on the City of Farr's annual strategic plan review and update. That's just information, wasn't it? Okay, no accident there. Purchasing, 9A, consideration in action any on the purchase of a pumper tanker for the fire department from Deco Fire Equipment utilizing buy board cooperative purchasing contract number 651-21, in the amount of $1,600,005. This item supports sound, safe and secure community for fire.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, all right? C9B, consideration in action any unauthorized city manager to award service contract to Southern Trenchless Solutions out of La Feria, Texas, for the repair and rehabilitation of manholes through buy board contract number 635-21, in the amount of $146,998, $149,998. This item supports infrastructure, public utilities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Opposed, it passes. So ten A, right? Contract and agreements. Ten A, consideration in action, sorry. If any authorized the city manager enter into service contract with Lumitec Lighting Services from McAllen and Farr, of course, they have part, uh, an office in Farr, for citywide on-call electrical and maintenance services through purchasing cooperative buy board number seven one one dash twenty-three. Supports infrastructure.
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Ten B, consideration in action of any unauthorized city manager enter into service contract with KM International LLC for advertising agency of record management and newsletter services through the interlocal purchasing system, TIPS, number two three zero six zero one. Supports service in excellence. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Ten C, consideration in action of any on amendment number one in the amount of two million, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, point two nine dollars for time extension and supplemental fee for construction management, management services for the City of Farr Construction Donation Acceptance Project, Project, DAP, FY sixteen projects. That one supports infrastructure.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Opposed.
Oh, one, 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 opposed, you get that, Hila?
Motion to adjourn.
What's that? Yeah, I got a second for a close.
No, we offed yesterday, didn't we? I said motion to adjourn, we don't have...
Oh.
And you didn't say anything.
I'm sorry, yes.
Same thing like when I called you and you don't...
Yeah, whatever. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, we adjourned, five thirty-nine.